So it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and open the hearing. Actually, we'll pass, no, exactly 5:30, we'll open the hearing of the zoning board appeals. We have two items on the agenda tonight. But my name is David Bloomberg. With me, sitting on the board, is Sarah Northrup, Maureen Scanlon, and Elizabeth Silver. Voting members, I think, are Sarah, Elizabeth, and me. And Maureen is an associate member. Carolyn Mish is here from the offices of planning and sustainability, providing staff support. We have three items on the agenda. First, we'll start with public comment, but before we start, first of all, notice that this hearing was published on October 10th and October 17th, 2019. When we do hear the applications, we'll ask first that the applicant or the representative of the applicant address the board. The board will have a chance to ask and get questions answered from the applicant or the representative. After that, any members of the public who are here who would like to address the application will be free to do so. We ask that all questions and comments are addressed to the board, not to each other or to the applicant. And we ask that everybody identify him or herself by name and address for the record that Carolyn is keeping. But first, we open with public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any matters other than those that relate to the two applications tonight. Are there any members of the here public here tonight for general comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. And the first item on the agenda is the request by O'Connell Development Group for a finding for a change in a nonconforming buffer for 23 townhouse units at 10 Holly Street, Northampton, MAP ID 32A-171. And we'll ask that you identify yourself and...
Yes, good evening. I'm Andrew Crystal, 51 Old Andrew Drive in North Hampton is my address. And with me is John Furman from our consulting engineers, VHB, and I'm not sure where he lives.
I'm in Southgate.
Okay, thank you.
So again, per the application, we, my company has the former St. John campus property under agreement. We're looking at doing a townhouse development. We're in the process with the planning board and the DPW now going through plan review. The plan that you just saw a moment ago...
We have it, yes.
Can you go back to the existing condition? So this is the existing condition. What you're seeing is the social center, which is behind the rectory. So Phillips Place would be toward the bottom of your sheet. The post office would be toward the top of your sheet. So this is that long, single-story building that's behind the church. And that's scheduled to come down if we go forward with the proposed development. The red line that you're seeing is the edge of pavement, and that's called out at, I think, 5.5 feet from the property line. So it's a pre-existing, nonconforming setback. The property we're looking at has been rezoned as now central business. The adjacent property is URC. So there's a requirement for a 30-foot buffer that the planning board can waive to 20 feet. We can't quite accomplish that, so we've come before this board for finding that what we're proposing, which is a townhouse development, and as you can see, called out in the red boxes, the center box is the place where we're the very closest there. There's 10 and 1/2 feet of green space landscaping, then that's the edge of pavement, which is a private patio. These are single-family homes, privately owned. They're all market rate condominiums. And then there's another 15 feet of patio space before you get to the building. So that's the least conforming situation of what we're proposing. As you go to the left of that page, you'll see that there's almost 20 feet of green space before you hit the pavement for the patio, and then buildings again are another 15 feet What's being proposed along the property line, and we've met with each of the abutters and understood what their concerns are, is a row of a combination of arborvitae, shrubs, and trees, as shown along the property line behind us, through single-family homes. Is there anything else?
Curve cut.
Is that them as well?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So... That's a special permit, actually.
That's a special permit?
The curb cut for a big 50-foot within, adjacent to the other one, adjacent curb cut?
That's a planning board thing.
It's a special permit for more than two, but this was a finding within 50 feet.
Okay. So can you walk me through that, please?
Sure. So the, is the, this is Holly Street here. Let me zoom up a little bit on this as well. And the red box is the area that we have in question. At the north side of the property is the entrance or exit from the post office, which is a exit only, so vehicles coming out of the post office come here. This curb cut is existing, and we're planning on reusing it. Your zoning ordinance basically says that no part of a curb cut shall be within 50 feet of an existing curb cut. So it means the distance curb to curb has to be 50 feet. We have six because it's existing. So these two red lines represent where the curb cut would be if we had to bring that into compliance. And you can see that the distance left here is not wide enough for the width of the units plus the building setback. We can't move this curb cut any, we can move it some, but not enough to make any difference because of the church being right here as well. So that we, what we've done to try and create a separation is we have to replace the sidewalks on Holly Street. So as part of that, we're putting in a rumble strip. If you're familiar with what that is, it's like the merging strip that you get on the highway. We're putting that between the two curb cuts, so there's some definition between, so right now, it's just one large curb cut. So you could actually turn in and hit the retaining wall because there's no definition there. So the rumble strip will provide a break between the two curb cuts. This would be exit out, and this curb cut would be enter and exit.
How far back does that rumble strip grow? Because the note says crushed stone for the road.
The, yeah, so what's going on is the rumble strip goes from the gutter line to the sidewalk. The sidewalk continues through. The crushed stone is, we actually have a retaining wall on our side as well, so there's stone between the two retaining walls as a treatment.
And is that the only entrance and exit to your project, or am I looking at Phillips Place over here and seeing another one?
Yes, you are looking at Phillips Place that's also existing, and right now, it is unrestricted, so you can go in and out of it. What we are proposing is to have that be an entrance only. So this is, this will reduce the traffic from the development on Phillips Place because it's entrance only. This is being classified as our major curb cut in and out.
I know you said there was some separate garage space parking. Can you talk about that?
Sure. Let me zoom up on the building. So each unit has their own garage. The end units have parking for two cars. The center units have parking for one car. It's underneath the bottom floor of the developments.
Where do they enter? Where do the cars enter? Is it, they don't go around and behind?
No, no, no. So if you're, if you live in this unit here, you basically come in from here, and then you just pull in the garage.
It's got to be from the north side.
Over through here. So the garages are all on the side.
On the side of the driveway?
Yes.
You're entering from, I thought you said you're entering from Phillips.
You can enter from Phillips or Holly. You can only exit to Holly.
I see.
So the only, and this is going to Planning Board, this application for a special...
It's already before Planning Board, yes.
On other matters? What is, what will Planning Board be looking at, just so we're aware?
So they're looking at circulation because of the two curb cuts and that requires special permit in the central business district. They're looking at stormwater. They're also looking at landscaping and building design. It also is going to central business architecture in particular to be looking at the design because it's in the central business district. So there's use, lighting, pedestrian access setbacks. On your plate, or the nonconforming, is the nonconforming buffer on the east and the south side, and then this driveway location approximate to the post office exit.
So all other aspects of the proposed development will be subject to review by Planning Board? And the issue for us is just the request for a finding with respect to the buffers that are less than required?
Right.
And the curb cut, because it is too close to the curb cut for the exit from the post office?
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. The additional, I think, 23 parking spots, where would they be in relation to this?
The parking spots are associated with each unit, so they're in the unit. There's no off-site parking being proposed at all.
Oh, I think I read that there were additional lined lot, there was an additional line.
No.
Okay, so that's all the parking?
Yeah, the parking is just in each unit.
So visitors would park elsewhere?
Yes.
And is this part of the project with the south side of Phillips Place, the corner of Phillips and Holly?
That parcel is part of the property. If my company purchases, the church would go with it. That's there illustrative only. We're not proposing anything at this point, nor are we proposing anything with the church, just the 23 townhomes.
So in terms of density, again, our issues just relate to the impact of the buffers being less than the minimum required and the curb cut on Holly Street.
Right, so in the, and the point, the reason why you, in the zoning, we have the buffer between commercial and residential districts is to buffer those potential commercial uses that are right next to residential uses. In this case, it happens to be going from an institutional parking lot to a residential use, so there'll be residential next to residential.
So it's just that it's, it's a commercial zoning district. It's not a commercial use.
Right.
It's a residential use.
Right.
So it's sort of a technicality that because it's a boundary between two zoning districts, commercial and residential, a wider buffer is needed.
Right, regardless of what the use is on the site.
But despite the fact that the use is actually being converted to residential, which is the same as the use on the other side of the buffer, and those are single-family houses along Phillips Place?
Not all.
Or not all, some?
The ones that directly about this property are. There are some two-family on Phillips Place as well.
There's two-family and single-family in the vicinity of the boundary.
And the purpose of the buffer, sort of conceptually, is, I assume, both a screen, a visual screen and noise, or, I mean, is there...
It's probably more of a visual screen, particularly as it relates to parking, I believe. You know, if you have a, because in a commercial district, there's usually associated site parking that's different from a residential district. I don't know for sure if that's what the intent was when it was written 30, 40 years ago, whatever, but certain, and it applies to all commercial districts where that commercial district boundary of lots are residential district.
Even...
And it's solely based on district boundary, not use within the site.
I wonder, that's interesting. I mean, it seems like the ordinance would make more sense if it said unless the use is going to be residential, but it doesn't, and that's why we're here on this point.
Right. And I will, just to add to that, we are in the process of working on an adjustment to the central business district, which would be a form-based code. And in that code, we are looking, we are likely going to change the language so that it does just that, because we have these side streets that aren't in the part of the core commercial district where maybe residential would be allowed instead of commercial on the first floor. And in that scenario, we think it doesn't make sense to require these big buffers when it's a residential against a residential.
Right.
So that's the way the ordinance is heading.
Right.
There are millerings, millerings, some of the site issued by the row of trees.
Yeah, this is the existing condition.
That becomes the buffer.
And there's nothing there now. The dice has tore out all of the plantings that were there last year. And right now, there's a road, so vehicles travel right behind the property line of those three homes.
Yeah.
In our proposal, where we can, we're moving the cars away from there and really putting residents to residents back to back, no different than the other side of Phillips Place. They're back to back with other homes.
Although it's a lot, it's a, a lot of residences has been created, a lot more structures than before.
It is. The planning board approved the project for the same site last year that had 62 apartments.
Right, and how many do you have?
23.
So it's already been approved for 62. The buffer wasn't an issue for that proposal?
They actually did come to the zoning board for buffer reduction. One was on this parking lot here. That's also, but that's not part of your request.
I think I...
It was two, it was more like three or four.
I think I remember that.
Yeah, it was three.
So did, so this, the buffer you are proposing, the green screen, I'll call it, tell me again what these plantings are? The proposed plantings?
Through the center, they're primarily arborvitae, although one of the residences asked us to make some modifications, which we're happy to do. Then I think one side are flowering dogwoods, they're trees, and then on the other side, there's seven maple, perhaps, or maple. I can't read the...
And I think, Carolyn, and we're talking about not only the buffer on what I'll call the southern side, but the eastern side as well? Or just along the driveway in from Phillips Place? Where's the other, you mentioned...
The driveway is actually not their property. It's an easement over, but the pro, the zoning boundary is on the eastern side, too.
And we also do not have a 30-foot buffer there. And what are those plantings? It says existing vegetative buffer to remain.
That's correct.
What is that vegetation?
It's kind of overgrown. It's very eight to 10-foot hedge, heads.
Yeah.
You can't see through it, but we're not planning on taking it down.
And so you said you've had meetings with the abutting neighbors?
Yes.
And you said you, there were some, we'll hear, if anyone's here tonight, we'll hear from them, but, by the way, nothing from DPW or...
Yes, I was going to pull that up. I just got it this afternoon. I don't know if it, I just wanted to check. I'm not sure it relates to the finding, it's more planned.
Planning Board, yeah.
So I can...
You'll let us know before we're done.
Yep.
Well, while you're doing that, can you tell us about the conversation with the abutters and any alterations that you've made as a result of those conversations or with the general responses?
Really, it was information sharing. We heard their concerns. The middle lot of those, there's three lots that are adjacent to where we're talking about. The middle lot has a carriage house at the back that's actually encroaching over the property line. They've asked if we could hold off or modify the plantings there. Guess he wants to work on his building, and if we put up a hedgerow arborvitae he can't get at. So we're going to ask the planning board to allow us to hold off until a neighbor's The other, we met with the neighbors on either side of the easement. They wanted to be sure that we didn't take any landscaping down, or if we don't plan to do, we're just going to put some utilities and repave the driveway in. And there were no other issues. In fact, one of the neighbors got up at the public hearing and commended the project.
Which public hearing was that?
Planning Board.
Oh, so you've already been to Planning Board?
Yeah.
There was continued because they don't have a stormwater permit, so they're going to come back November 14th. So I actually, all the DPW comments related to technical elements of the project, not the buffer. So that's all been sent to the planning board.
Okay. And are there members of the public here who want to address this? I see, one, two, three. Okay. So if there are no more questions for now, reserving the right to ask questions after, I'll invite one at a time, members of the public. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Patty Stoddard. I live at 22 Phillips Place with my husband, Mike, and I'm speaking for myself, my husband, and actually on behalf of Aisha and Chris Lynn, who can be here tonight. They're the abutters that live just next to us. So if you look at the plan, we, our home is right in front of where those four big circles are. That's where we're positioned. So we are not in favor of the nonconforming buffer at all. We did meet with Andrew, and we talked about a lot of other things, but I don't think we quite understood when we were talking with him that this was going to be an issue, that there was going to be a request for a nonconforming buffer rather than required buffer for commercial use. And I realize this is a residential property, and it's going to be used for residential purposes, but it seems to me that portions of what is being used for the group that is proposing this sometimes refers to, well, you know, this is, this is a commercial property, so we can do one thing, but on the other hand, it's a residential use, so we can go to the residential side. And I feel like it kind of, both sides of the fence are being played to benefit, to benefit the plan when it's convenient. So our biggest objection tonight is to say that we lived at 22 Phillips for about five years now. We bought the home because it was in a district where there were lots of beautiful old houses with beautiful architecture, and our street has recently been made, has been named historical. So, you know, we really pride ourselves on that street for having homes that have unique characteristics. Oftentimes, the historical society comes, has chores of our, of our street to explain the architecture, and it's just a very beautiful street along with camaraderie terrace. So when we heard about the project, we realized North Hampton is up and coming and is always looking for new properties and the like, but the property, the property is very tall. And to lessen the buffer between our home, which our yard, where we spend most of our time with our family and friends, is right there, as, right on the property line. That's basically where we sit in the same with the Flins. So that's really our only yard. We don't have backyards. So to have the properties so close to our property and to go with the nonconforming buffer, we would be going outside, and we were, would be looking at big looming buildings that are really close to our homes. So we'd kind of take away from the look of the street and the look, the character of the, of the neighborhood. In addition to that, we proposed putting up plantings, but some of the plantings that they proposed, the arborvitae specifically, are two-and-a-half-gallon arborvitae, which are only about two feet tall. So for those to have to grow to provide a privacy barrier between our home and the homes that are there would take quite a while. And lastly, that side of the building that we're looking at doesn't really have any character at all. The front side of the building has a lot of the, of the roof lines and, you know, the character that's consistent with North Hampton, but the backside is basically just a tall building. And so now, we've got the church on the left, which is a big, tall building, which was there when we bought the property. But now, to have another big, tall property looming over us is just really, we don't feel like it's in keeping with the neighborhood, nor do the Flins, and we would like to ask that the nonconforming, nonconforming buffer not be approved.
Can I ask a question? Did I, have I represented you? Okay. I, I think, did I represent you when you bought that house? Okay. I should at least abstain from voting, if not recuse myself altogether. What, well...
Well, you don't have a relationship with the applicant.
That's true.
And, you know, you probably have a lot of clients in this, or former clients, but it's up to you.
Is it a, is it a, ask if there are any concerns the applicant in that regard?
No, it's really, I think, up to David to determine whether, you know, if you can view this objectively.
How would people feel if I remain and preside, but the three of you vote?
Sounds like a good compromise and take care of your concerns.
Elizabeth, you're...
No, I'm just trying to think through, you know, the ethical...
I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable. I don't think it's technically an ethical issue as long as the, well, I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable because I've represented the, the abutters who have raised these objections in the purchase of this very same house, even though I don't think I currently represent them. I just, I'm concerned about appearances. But my thought is that I don't, as a suggestion, is that I don't join in the voting. And the three of you make the quorum for voting?
Sounds good. I mean, I, I'm doing the Rolodex, fact, duty, ethical, and conflicts, and I don't see, especially with the disclosure, a technical conflict, but I think that if you're uncomfortable and if it would make the vote less questionable, or even the appearance of...
Well, I think that's exactly where I'm at.
Then that's fine, I think that's fine. That's just...
And I don't know if I could...
I assume you're okay.
And I, and I don't know if I could proceed in an unbiased manner because of my former relationship with people who were my clients.
Okay. That's fine, I think that makes sense.
And so I think the only question is, do I recuse myself altogether or act as a moderator in my capacity as chair, but not participate in the vote?
I think it has to be one or the other.
Okay.
So I think if you want to recuse, then that means you're not part of any of the conversation.
Okay.
You can go here, second line, no, 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 your second line. Take it over, Sarah.
So maybe what I'll do is wait outside until the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm passing the gavel to Sarah, I think. Sarah is the vice chair, and so you'll take over and preside. Okay, and I guess I'll, you'll let me know when you're done.
Lauren?
Okay. This one just feels a little too close.
Thanks, everyone. So I just wanted to see if there's any other... So are there any other folks who would like to speak on this application? Yes, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Joe Migh. I live at 33 Holly Street.
Joe, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Oh, Migh, N-Y-G-N. I live at 33 Holly Street. So this is, this is the first I was hearing about this project. I've been living at that residence for a year at this point. I don't, my, my concerns right now, I don't know if this is appropriate to speak about concerns other than the specific issue, but I'm, my primary concern is the, there being market rate housing instead of there being subsidized or affordable housing for people. I mean, this property overlooks, or is really close to a bridge where a number of people are living, and there's still a number of homeless populations in this area that I feel like could benefit from there being structures built and having affordable subsidized housing. There's a number of people on waiting lists, and I think it would be almost like a crime not to take into consideration those people who are living on the streets, especially as it's going to be colder weather. I myself work for a nonprofit, helping people with mental illness. A number of people are homeless, and I have been participating in helping hand out meals to people on the Friday lunch. And I think that, I don't know, just, I mean, like, I, before I lived here, I was, like, the only reason I could afford living here is I found a place where I didn't have to pay some deposits and stuff, but I, it's hard to struggle with this. I mean, I know this isn't, not a cheap place to live, but I think there's people who call this place their home and are trying to survive, especially living on the streets and hearing those people talk and asking if, like, the waiting lists and how far they are. And I mean, it's hard, I don't, I feel very privileged to have a roof over my head. I'm, I don't know, I just, I didn't know what this project was, and I was assuming that with the number of residences, there'd be at least some sort of affordable housing or at least subsidized housing. But I'm not really sure if this time has passed to talk these things over, or even, and then also people talking about the, this is like really far off, but...
We're going to ask you to, do you have comments that are specific to the matter before us? There are certainly valid points.
Yeah.
And those are usually dealt with at the level of the city council and the planning department, Planning Board. What's before us right now is about whether the existing setback from one, the existing building to the property line versus the proposed buildings to the property line. It's a very narrow thing that... It's a very narrow thing that the zoning board is looking at.
Oh, okay.
So your valid and interesting discussion is certainly good, but it's not under our purview.
Yeah, definitely. I was, I came to this not knowing much about what this was gonna be, but I saw a sign in front of the property that stated this time, and I was coming here just to let my voice be heard.
Yes.
But perhaps I could, when would that discussion be held unless it has already happened, talking about those issues?
Well, the larger issues get talked about at various city meetings pretty regularly. It's a pretty common topic of affordable housing and, you know, the projects down on Pleasant Street that have subsidized units and all of that. That gets talked about pretty regularly. So, Carolyn, is there a website?
I can give you my card, you can contact me, and I can talk to you about.
There's also a public comment section at the beginning of every city council meeting, the first and third Thursday of the month, is that right, Council Nash?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and that's open for up to three minutes of comments on any topic.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
It's not an engagement with the councilors, it's just speaking up. I also know that the authority has been actively trying to get vouchers for under a program in particular that's gonna get some particular housing people off the street.
You said be enlisted to help with that.
Well, we're waiting on the application, but yeah. Sarah's right, there's a lot of conversations going on in the city, and I appreciate your comments because they are important.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Please come up and.
State a name for the record. Yes, hello, Jim Nash, Ward Three City Councilor. And first off, I want to recognize O'Connell Development Group for the outreach that they've done, that we've worked together on doing an informational forum. We had forty-plus people attend at the community building that the people had, got a good idea of what the project is going to look like and what their long-term plans are in terms of the different phases. I was hoping that tonight, that the abutters would be coming here because they had some sort of discussion between the O'Connell and the abutters to come forward with, you know, some sense of an agreement happening that you wouldn't be the deciders here, that there would be some sort of, yeah, we've come to an agreement, here's what we're gonna do, and I'm a little disappointed that hasn't happened.
What do you take that to mean, if anything?
You know, I think that, you know, I've encouraged both sides to speak and come to an agreement, and that, I think there's been some dialogue, but I just wish there would have been more tonight rather than having things land in front of you to make this decision rather than, well, we have an agreement with the abutters and this is what it's gonna look like. The last thing I want to address really isn't, it's not part of the agenda here, but it is part of the bigger picture, and it does relate to something that the abutters and Joe was addressing, which is, I think it was about seven years ago that we switched this property from URC to Central Business, and that with the intent that the church structure, that this was a way to save the church structure, that the latitude that was being allowed around development and that we're seeing right here was with the idea that the church was gonna be preserved in some manner. The previous plans that were approved by the planning board for a senior housing development had the church turning into a restaurant that would be used by the residents within the project, and also it would be open to the public. And it was built on a model that was actually done down in Webster Groves, Missouri, and I've been to that restaurant, and it was actually, it's a really nice restaurant. And so it was a model that seemed like it could work. My worry here is that, here we are, we're early on in the project, and we're allowing latitude for a development, and the church remains a mystery. You know, it's, that, and that, and part of what I'm doing here is holding O'Connell's feet to the fire. I know this isn't for you guys to decide, but that in the interest of, you know, the public, you know, that we voted to change this to Central Business, but it's not about, you know, getting, you know, variances and things like that. It ultimately gets back to preserving that amazing church structure, which completely defines the street, and that if we were to lose that, I think it would have an even bigger bearing than if, you know, than, I, this is a very dense project going on here. Oh, and the last thing I want to mention, it really relates to what Joe was saying. If this were still URC, there would be affordable housing requirements going in for a project this size. No?
No.
Not at all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good try.
That was a good try. All right.
So, this raises a question. So O'Connell, or who owns the church now?
The church.
The church.
Roman Catholic Diocese of Springfield.
So, but the, so the only piece that has been purchased is the piece we're talking about?
Nothing's been purchased.
Nothing's been purchased.
There's an option, and so.
Does the option include the church?
Yeah.
It's one big parcel.
Yeah.
Okay.
So as Andrew Crystal related previously, if they do move forward with the purchase, it would also include this lot across the street.
The thing.
Right. The whole, all the whole ones.
Okay. Which, I mean, you're right, you already said this, that that's not what we're considering tonight, but it's just an interesting piece to think about.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else that you?
Well, that's really it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's kind of a message to the developer, the public, the spirit of the public to change this property.
Well, I have one more question for you, which is all total hearsay question and would not be probably admissible anywhere else, but in the hearing or the meetings that you had in the neighborhoods and the forty people that have been there, what's been the sentiment?
You know, there, I would say the biggest concern is parking, that this project is relying on on-street parking for visitors, which is what everybody in the neighborhood depends on, which is what many of the workers downtown depend on. Phillips Place and Holly Street in this area is prime parking space for workers downtown. That it's a, it's the end of Holly Street is, Phillips Place is where the non-metered parking begins. So it gets full, I've counted forty to fifty cars on the street during the daytime. The height of the buildings concerns the neighbors, but they're within the zoning for both, the height is within the zoning for both URC and Central Business. So I, you know, we can say we don't like it, but zoning allows it. The parking.
I can't imagine what the density was before when it was sixty-two units, coming down to twenty-three, that must have been.
It was a lot higher.
A lot higher. Yeah.
It was further, I don't know.
Right, it was to the other side of the lot.
Well, it was a big massing, it was fifty-five, sixty, over sixty feet.
And neighbors were told a lot of old people would be there, looking out their windows and not doing much. And I expected seniors will also like this location as well.
And the sentiment in favor of it?
You know, it's hard to gauge if people, I can tell you that some of my constituents who are up against the project, abutters of the project, are very concerned about it, and that, that people, people do want to see the property developed. Right now, the, as it is, it's abandoned, there's, the police are often visiting the site because different things are going, it could be ivy, drug use, could be just people hanging out, so. It's a plus to have this site developed, most definitely, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this application?
Can I just add one more thing?
If you keep it brief and to the point, yes.
I just want to say, in response to Jim's comments about the height of the building, he said that, you know, the height of the building is allowed, and so there's nothing really to be done, it's allowed for residential and it's allowed for commercial, but the nonconforming buffer is not allowed unless there's a special variance that's granted. So again, we're talking about some things that are allowed for, that are currently allowed, and we're talking about other things that need a special variance to be allowed. So, you know, I kind of feel like, feel like we're kind of helpless in this situation because we're trying to make our voices known, the abutters that are right there are trying to express how we feel about this, and we're really, we're really against the nonconforming buffer because of that height of that building, which is allowed, but somehow when a tall building like that is pushed further away from your home and your yard, it's not as imposing as it would be if it was right there, close to your home. So that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. Let me just clarify, there's no variance involved. It's, was before us is a finding, correct?
Right. So there's an existing.
It's not a special permit.
Right, there's an existing.
It's not a waiver of any sort, it's a finding.
Right. It's allowed for anybody that has currently a nonconforming situation, so if there's a change to a parcel with a nonconforming situation, then it gets, then anyone, any applicant can come to the board to ask to either maintain that same nonconforming situation or in some instances, as we encourage them, to make it a little bit better than the existing condition. So what they presented was a change in a situation to make it more than what's there now.
To the abutters' point that the buffer would serve to push a building further away, which, that's general, that's the whole point of having a buffer, and which would decrease the effect of a high wall closer away, you have further angle, you have like, of course, the north side of.
Right. And it's, just so you know, it is, they're townhouse units, they're thirty-five feet to the peak, they have gabled roofs, so it's not the massing that's there now, which is just one big box of a.
It's not as tall.
Right, I think it's twenty-five feet to the peak, around that, and it's just, that's one big blank wall.
One big blank wall.
Well, not blank, but one long continuous facade.
Would have liked to see elevations.
I have those.
So, before we close the application?
Yeah, if I could just respond to a couple of things. Not only is that height allowed, it's required, there's a minimum height requirement in Central Business at thirty feet, this building measures by the city's regulation thirty-five feet. So we can make it five feet shorter, then we'd need a variance. The planning board allows a twenty-foot buffer behind their home, the Stoddards' home, there is a twenty-foot buffer before the pavement, the patio. It's the next house up, I believe it's the Flins, who I've had multiple conversations with this week, offered to meet with them again today, which they declined, who did not express any concern to me about the, let the setback being not meeting current conformance with regulations, but being better, their concern was that they had access to their building, which I mentioned earlier, we've agreed to.
Thank you. All right. So, in the interest of.
We'd like to speak to the size of the trees. I'd like to hear the abutter who's expressed concern about the height of the plantings you intend to put there, seems kind of small.
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
So, two and a half, the arborvitae, let me zoom up on them here. The, the, here we go. The plantings that we show on the site represent growth at two-thirds matured. So when you look at, when you look at these buffers here, and you look at these, these are representative, these are the arborvitae through here, and that represents growth after about five years. The plants that are specified are two and a half, two and a half gallon pot, and they range in size from about three and a half feet to four and a half feet. An arborvitae grows on average about a foot a year. That's why before we have arborvitae, we specify them by pot size because you can get them, they grow very quickly, and then they're intended to grow very densely and growing together.
What are the, the four trees at the?
Here?
Yeah, at the end.
Those are dogwoods. Those are CKs, those are Cusa dogwoods, those are two and a half inch calipers, they grow to be thirty foot tall with a thirty foot spread.
But they're fair in the winter?
Yes.
True.
And then to the right of the arborvitae, as we're looking at it?
Hang on one second. This is a presentation?
Sugar maple. No, crab apple.
TOs.
Twenty-three TOs and then seven.
TOs are, oh, arborvitae, and the other ones were.
There's seven trees further along, those are crab apples.
Crab apples, and those are eighteen foot tall with fifteen foot spreads.
And this, this key indicates two gallon arborvitae, but you're saying they're two and a half?
Two, no, two, yeah, what's on the plant.
And that's a three, three and a half to four feet at?
Yes, at planting, it's three and a half to four feet, they grow about a foot a year.
And that's essentially using the buffer?
It's actually more of the buffer. So the existing, on this plant here, just so I wouldn't have to flip back and forth, in this plot right here, you can see this line right here? That's the property line, and this is the property that, with the abutters that are here. So we are saying right now that we are providing a buffer of twenty-two point eight feet, which basically goes from the property line to the backs of these patios through here. So the building is another fourteen feet beyond that. We went to a hard surface because the finding that we're asking for is to a hard surface. So if we're comparing to the building, the building is another fourteen feet, so the building is thirty-six feet from the property line. The existing hard surface from the same property line is five point six feet. So if hard surface to hard surface, you have five point six now, we're providing twenty-two point eight. And the earlier plans that you have there are the existing ones when we first started our presentation, that was the red line that we showed. That red line on the other side of that red line, that's a driveway. So everyone who accessed the parking lot drove down that road. There are no cars in this area right now. So when you look at those facts, it's our opinion that as far as a finding goes, we are meeting the criteria for making what is there better. We are still nonconforming, but we are improving what's there.
What I'm seeing, it looks like the, the face of the building is pretty much lined up where the existing building line is now. The building is gonna come down.
Mm-hmm. I would say that's correct, yeah.
It depends on which one you're looking at.
Yeah, this building right here?
This one that is closest to the signs and the flints, that is at the same line as the existing building. They're not coming closer.
And you said these are gabled roofs, so there's not gonna be any rooftop gardens essentially creating?
No. I have the elevations, if you'd like me to flip to them, I don't know.
I think the description was okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to respond to.
Sure. Yeah. It's not colonial style building, I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, but it's.
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
I think we have what we. I think we have what we need.
So, that's the question, do you think we have what we need? Are we ready to close?
I'm ready to close the public hearing.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you. So, the public hearing is closed, we won't be taking any more testimony, the public meeting will continue. You can pick around if you want, decide if we can. And we have any further discussion? Thoughts on the specificity of our finding?
My thoughts are that they're making the best use of the existing buffer area as possible, instead of within code and the construction and placement of the buildings. And I can feel for the butters who will be so close to those three stories, but I can favor a change based on what's okay as a development from my perspective.
And I just wanted to double check if you found the D W comment, if there's anything relevant to our purview?
No, it's all technical, planning board related items, related to utilities, stormwater.
And, and I pretty much echo what Maureen says, that, you know, it's, it's being less non-conforming, it's being made better. So I don't think it's...
So it's been continued at the planning board level?
Right.
Meaning there will be, there will be another planning board, a public hearing?
The public hearing is still open, they continue the public hearing to November, well, till tonight, but it's going to be continued without discussion tonight to November 14th. The central business architecture application hasn't yet been submitted, so they still have central business architecture hearing.
Thank you. Any further discussion with the board? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the finding to make the, as requested, the finding to make changes to the buffer, as requested.
And have to include the curb cut change?
The change is requested, yeah, so the curb cut and the buffers.
And the curb cut as well, yes.
All in favor?
Right.
Vote yes.
So that's not tonight's...
Yeah. Thank you folks.
Thank you.
Save it back in or we could head home?
He's coming back.
Okay. I relinquish the chair, goodbye, to our chair.
Okay, so I guess we're ready to hear the second item on the agenda, the request by Truly LLC for a finding for a change in the non-conforming site buffer tree planting parking lot layout curb cuts at 216 North Street, North Hampton, Mass. 216 North King Street, map ID 18-7.
Good evening, I'm Jesse Alderman, I'm attorney for the applicant John Furman from VHB, he's doing double duty tonight, I suppose.
Yeah.
Dennis Greenwood is the architect and record on the project. And walking in the door just in time is Truly Cannabis Corp's Director of Business Development, Camilo Bosto, who's here with us tonight.
You brought the samples, right? The camera's not running, right Carolyn?
It actually is.
Okay, good evening, I'm John Furman, Director of Land Development for VHB, and we are here for, to present information for three findings that we have for this property. Again, it is 216 North King Street. I have the plan set in front of me here, this is the existing condition survey of the existing property. And Truly will basically be, or in life essence, doing business as Truly, will be a tenant in a portion of the building. This is actually Valley Motorsports. So just for orientation, this is the outline of where their space will be, over here. They're a tenant in this building and under the zoning code, a reuse of the building, the zoning code requires that the property be brought into compliance with current zoning regulations. As a tenant, we don't have the ability to make all of these improvements, so that's why we're here to, for three of them in particular. What I'm going to do is just go through quickly, there's really not much in the way of site plan changes. Again, this is our site plan. What I want to do is go to our landscaping plan where I've identified the three finding requests. So the first one, I don't know if there's any order of which they were presented in your paperwork, but the first one is for the number of curb cuts. Your zoning ordinance limits the amount of curb cuts per property to one. This property has three and that's under section 350 8.8G. So there's one curb cut here on Hatfield Street and there's actually two curb cuts onto North King Street. Mass DOT has a project going in right now, they're basically designing a roundabout for this intersection. So what you see here is the projected curb line of what will be left for us once that project is done. So we've actually accounted for the work that's, that's going to be here.
What's the timeline on that, do you know?
I don't know, I'm not involved in it.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a timeline on the roundabout?
Yes, it's going, oh geez, I think it's going out to bid later, like any minute.
At least a couple of years.
Well, right, the completion will be a couple of years, but the project stuff actually is either out to bid or will be out to bid momentarily.
So as a tenant, you know, knowing that that's a zoning requirement, we approach the landlord and the landlord is not interested in reducing the amount of existing curb cuts that are there. So we don't have the ability to act on that. So we are here for finding to actually ask that the curb cuts that are there remain there. That's our first finding request. The second finding request that we have actually deals with landscaping buffer. So under section 350, 350 6.5A, there's a certain requirement and a certain depth for landscape buffers along the front edge of properties. This is an existing development. If you are familiar with the site, there is no landscaping there at all. It is a seven foot buffer. After the end of the Mass Highway Project, Mass DOT Project, there'll be about a four foot buffer left on our property. So we are proposing that we basically plant trees within that buffer which we have shown here, and we are requesting a finding which would allow us to leave the buffer with the way that it is right now.
And the landlord will allow the plantings?
He will. To kind of offset the request for that, this is a, the owner here, I think it's Mark's Motors, it's a car dealership. So we are proposing to close this curb cut. It's basically just kind of an inter-cross curb cut. He has got another curb cut right here, you can see the end of it, and we are turning that into a planter. So while we are not providing the width of planter that we get all the way through here, we are adding plantings here on our property. So you'll get additional plantings on the side. It really does not tie to the, to the finding, it has nothing to do with the landscape request, we're just hoping that that might, additional landscaping might help make the area look nicer and help with your decision. The, the last finding request is this blue oval here, and that has to deal with parking, section 350 8.8A. Under your zoning code, you require parking spaces which are eight and a half feet wide by 18 foot long, and the minimum drive aisle behind them is 22 feet, I believe. Carolyn didn't look at me, so I'm going with 22 feet. So...
Then we'll get back up. It's 18.
Eight, yeah. We have, we have 13 feet available to us. That is impacted by a fence that goes between the two properties. There's a four foot high chain link fence that has frequently been backed into, it is now bent over to the park where it's reduced what we have to, available for us for a drive out. So as part of the project, we will be pulling that out and we'll be putting in a guard rail, double-faced, it'll have a very narrow profile to it, steel post, but the beams will be bolted right to the, to guard rail. And that will gain us one foot on that drive out. So we'll be going from 13 to, to about 14.
How do you gain a foot?
Because the fence is bent over like this. When we measured the drive aisle, we measured it from where the fence is.
Okay, but from where the fence is, is cemented in, it's not going to get you anymore?
That's, no, that's right. If you drove down it, you'd have a huge scrape down your car, so...
Well, I didn't do that, but it, turning around was interesting.
Yeah. So those are the three requests that we have in front of you.
Any questions from the board?
Just hope this whole long-term contract, please, on the property...
That Hatfield Street entrance, you don't intend to use that, that's not who you're going to navigate the public to your entrance.
No, no. Anyone coming to the facility would be directed toward the street address, which is 216 North King. They would not find their way to North Hatfield Street.
But the landlord won't let you block it off?
That's correct.
So the 13-foot drive aisle, the customers will pull in to the angled parking spots and then come out and then they back up, and then do they continue forward?
Uh, no, they would, they would have to back out the way they came in. The, this...
Where the significant tree is, they have to...
The, the, the drive out doesn't go any further than that. So they, they basically come in from North King Street, they pull in, then they back out. There was a, an office type of situation here before as a previous tenant, and it was a health, health clinic, I think it was Service Net, I believe is what it was called. And they had frequent people coming in, they did not see patients here, but they had their counselors always coming in, getting case information, then coming out. So they had more traffic than a typical medical office might have it, but they did that same thing for as long as they were here. They would, they'd pull in, then they would back out. So they did not turn around.
So they have to back out...
That's what I had to do.
Yeah, to the front dr, to that drive out.
So, okay, and we get to the other sheet where I'm looking at this, so the dark line is then the new edge of pavement?
Uh, on this plan right here? Is that the one you're looking at?
To create travel path to roll out dumpsters. So the tree's going and the dumpster's there, so...
So you're, you're, you're looking at our site plan?
Yes, now I'm looking at C2, I have two sheets, C2 and L100.
So, so that, that is not, that is not correct.
L100 says the signet, the tree's remaining.
It is, the tree stays, yeah.
It's the only tree on the property that's going to stay.
Yeah, this doesn't, this is not getting moved over, so this has to get reworked. The dumpster that was, was here is going to be a roll-off dumpster, so there will be a pad back here, but when it gets serviced, it would get rolled off between, there's the pavement line is, is right at the end here, it'll get rolled off from here to here, it'll get picked up and then it'll get pushed back in. It's a small dumpster, it's not one of the big large ones that have to be moved. So that, that's incorrect on that plan.
And it's, if I remember correctly, if I could drive forward past the significant tree, that's a pretty steep hill up to Hatfield Street.
Yeah, from, from the parking lot here...
Yeah.
To the pavement of Hatfield Street, I'd say it's probably from 10 to 12 feet, very quick.
You could do weight finding signs too, I mean, to, you know, to help just clear it up, but nobody's getting past that tree.
Right.
That's right.
Fair amount of traffic for this use.
Uh, it's pretty consistent with what was there before and, you know, honestly, in the greater Boston area, let me say that the aisle is not, the drive aisle is not ideal, hence the request for the finding, but it, it's consistent with, we've seen smaller, the dispensaries that are open in the greater Boston area where the lots are obviously tighter. We've tested it out.
And it's medical, not recreational.
Correct, it's medical.
It's medical, not recreational.
Yeah, you're going to see...
It's not open to the public.
For now.
You're going to see a fraction of the traffic that you see over on the head of books, so I...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not recreational, for now, it's medical.
Yeah, so only certified patients will be able to check.
From the, using, using the, the traffic numbers that are in the North Hampton City zoning code, we're expecting increase over existing of about 41 cars, not significant.
So when you say for now, is there an effort to... I just, honesty came from this end, yeah. So there's an attempt to expand into recreational?
It's not, it's actually honestly not clear at the moment. It, it's an option that the, that the applicant is considering, but they have not made a final determination at the moment, and we, we expect that conversations with the city would need to progress quite a bit further before that, i- if in fact they decided to.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt. It seems to me the front building is vacant and abandoned, is that correct?
A portion of it is.
Whatever that was.
A portion of it is. Majority of it's used by Valley Motorsports right now.
So there's no parking in the front? Or is it...
There is parking in the front, there's a...
No, I know that, no, 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 I, sorry, I mis, I mis said that. There's parking in the front, is it going to be usable for this business?
Yes, there's all, there's, how many spots, John?
There's sixteen along the building.
Well, but how many are reserved for us? We show it on a different plan.
Oh, I didn't know that you had that here.
Uh, we may not have it on the plan before you, but I believe there's...
Twenty-two totals, but there's I think six in the front.
Six in the front for our use.
And then the ones along the side?
Right here?
No, the other side. Let's say existing spaces, parking spaces?
Those here?
Yes.
Those do not warrant the tenant.
Those do not.
So the lease has designated parking spaces exclusive use of this tenant.
Yeah, I have to say, I mean, it was, backing out of there was, you know, you have to back out of there. Just suggest everybody wait on taking those gummies before they're backed out and turn around.
They're not supposed to do that anyway.
Right.
Just saying.
But to clarify, and I'm sorry if you explained this already, you're not really altering the existing parking along that side, right? I mean, that's how people park right now anyway.
Correct, yeah.
So you're changing the fence to a guard rail?
Yes.
So people may hit it, but they won't see it, but they'll feel it.
They will certainly feel it.
And you're, is there a sidewalk that goes around to, from the front, from those whatever six reserved spots?
There is not. There's no sidewalks on property.
Is there going to be a mirror to see people coming, going?
Um, mirror for...
Because if somebody, if somebody is in the furthest parking lot closest to Hatfield and they're pulling out and backing all the way down that alley...
So that is why we thought it was important to close this parking, this drive aisle off, because it prevented cross-traveling between here?
No, I think she's saying, John, if there's somebody back, if there's somebody maneuvering out from here and then there's a patient walking down. Although I don't believe they'd conflict except for these three parallel spots, because that's the entrance. So there, there would only be a conflict between a patient coming from the front of the building and these three parallel spots.
These three, uh...
There's three spots right here.
One, two, three.
Well, no, vehicles are still backing down.
They're backing all the way down from...
But it's, the entrance is here though.
But it's not ideal.
It's not being used right now.
Well, this was used for quite some time, for an intent, I mean, a use that's nominally less intense.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's, it's just...
It seems to me that really just goes to marketing and business planning, not the our issue.
Right, you're right.
In other words, I don't think that relates to the question of whether it's significantly more detrimental. It was, it's the same as it was before, and other things are being improved.
But we still need to provide a finding on the parking, right?
That it's not significantly more detrimental.
Yeah, in the existing condition.
Yeah.
It's just the use that's changing, the parking isn't changing.
Well, it's the amount of...
All right, all right, I'll stop. Okay.
But there are other, could you elaborate a little bit on the ways you're improving the, the site, ameliorating the non-conformity or reducing?
On which issue?
Uh, any of them? Any of them.
Sure. If you, um... Here's a, an enlargement of the landscaping plan. Your plans don't have these colored ovals on it. So as far as the curb cuts go...
Right.
Um, they're existing, we're not changing them and...
Yeah, no, you've, you've mentioned, you've, the, the green oval on the, on the right is an improvement. is an improvement.
It's an improvement, so we're adding in these, these plantings through here, and then we are adding street plantings across the front here.
The landscaping is a substantial improvement.
Right, and because right now there's, there is no?
There's nothing.
There's nothing.
So, it brings pretty close to, to conformity, at least with the spirit of your frontage requirements, but I would.
It brings a business to the area that we're in right now.
Right. Any, any other questions before I ask? Is anyone here from the public who wanted to address or ask about this application? I see nobody.
Do we have any issue around lighting? Or is that premature?
You can ask about lighting, this is going to the planning board because actually this requires a site plan approval, the medical, medical requires site plan, there's some, um, I believe there's some changes, submitted a lighting plan for?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for the planning board, okay.
Would you like to see that?
No.
No, the planning board is going to look at it, I don't, I don't feel the need.
I don't either.
Especially talking around here.
Yeah, and?
It's online if we want to read it. All right, okay.
So?
Motion to close the public hearing?
All in favor, because I'm voting again, okay? Thank you, that's unanimous, and a motion on the request for the finding and the application.
Have that in front of me? I'm willing to sort of bring it?
Yes. I move to approve the application for findings for the change in the non-conforming site, including the buffer tree planting, the parking lot layout, and the curb cuts as not being more detrimental than currently exists. Second?
Second. Any discussion, or? Not needed, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
One more, and it's a hat trick.
John, do you want me to delete those?
Well, no, because you need them for planning board, right?
Yeah, this will be here?
Right, so we'll just get the hat trick. Yeah, that'll be here.
It'll be here in another half hour.
Um, so I don't have any minutes, but you will?
Parting comment?
Yes.
Having chaired the city's planning board for 10 years, I commend you on your self-restraint and knowing which responsibility lays where, because it always happened that way.
Thank you, appreciate that. So, no minutes for this one?
It is in our next meeting, November 14th, it'll be, it's a five-year. There won't be one on the 28th, just so you know. Thanksgiving, right?
Could we also check, Bob, that the 14th is, I'm, if, that day is my son's 30th birthday, I don't know if we have a plan, but it feels like we should. And he may be with other friends, but, um, I'm going to put it down, but maybe we could check with Bob, and if everyone could just get back to care, it's okay with you, 14th? And Maureen, you'll check?
Okay, so let me just check, I'll just put it out to myself tomorrow.
To check with Bob, just, I mean, I can, I don't know, there's no specific plan right now, but it's a big birthday. Oh, right.
Oh, right.
Yes, are we, are we done?
Yes.
Second?
That's unanimous.